A cause meeting in order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government body. The city has sort of buys by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of the main room facility as required. Disclosure of being recording process is posted in the meeting room. If participant's sign sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. President shall approach the podium, state the name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any group of response should be made. The city of Syracuse reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back. Camper, Fritz, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans.
Here.
Hendricks.
Hendricks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's alright, Hendricks.
Sorry.
First item is the evening consideration of approval of draft minutes of December eighteen, twenty eighteen.
Move for approval.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second, it's during discussion. Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Items two and three are the consent agenda items for this evening.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, it's during discussion. Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item four is consideration of a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the installation and operation of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon and signage at the intersection of Highway fifteen and Hillcrest Drive.
I'll take that one. Since Jake's after. This is the rapid flashing beacon that we spoke about, that we essentially authorized when we presented to you previously over at Highway fifteen and Hillcrest Drive. What the agreement does is just authorizes us to undertake the process to put that in now. Ultimately, we will pay for ourselves, the beacon, the poles, the signal button. The signage itself will actually be provided by the state. They'll update our signage to the kind of neon yellowish-green signage and update all of that. And so, but this gives us the authorization to continue to move forward with this. I don't anticipate that we'll get it all done within the school year just due to the nature of, it wasn't a budget item. I can tell you right now, it's going to be approximately upwards of ten thousand dollars to get this all the way installed on our behalf. So maybe something that we complete right at the beginning of the school year, over the summer or something like that, or look into next budget year, depending on what our projects look like. But if anybody has any questions about it, I can answer those.
Any questions on item four? If none, let's move on to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven. Will anyone like to move that this resolution be passed in the end of October?
Still move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please display the votes.
I'm sorry, the second.
Alright, item number five, consideration of an agreement with Olson Associates for professional engineering services for construction of Southwest Municipal Well Number Three. Greg.
Yes, it's a budgeted item that we have. We are doing an engineering for the design of the actual well system for the replacement of Southwest Municipal Well Number Three. We budgeted sixty thousand dollars for this one, and Olson and JEO were the two contacted parties for engineering services. Olson was the lowest, and so we've selected them at the fifty-five thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for that engineering project this year.
Any questions from the council on item number five?
Yes.
Just a question, and it really doesn't have anything to do with this particular, but when we go out for bids on these, besides the two that we always seem to come up with, are, is there any way to expand out, are there other companies that we could include once in a while to kind of keep everybody?
On the utility side, some of that's kind of hard, especially on projects that they have to have all the information that's contained within our system to be able to do the engineering. And so when they're putting something into the system that's part of the process, electrical's the worst on this. It makes it hard, we did provide all the relevant information on some of these projects to anyone that was interested in it, but these are the, tend to be the two that have the most data on us. And so they're able to run the models and do things like that. But we can continue to look in the future to find other firms, it's just the upfront cost and time for them to get loaded into our whole system and upload it tends to be harder.
Yes, Sid.
Let me know if this is too far off the path, but has the location for this been selected already?
Yes, they've done test wells.
They've done test wells, and just out of curiosity, how does it test nitrate wise with the other ones?
I don't know the exact nitrate profile, but I know that Tim has been looking at, and will talk to the contractor about looking at a different well system. I want to, I'd be remiss in saying, but I want to say it's a Dakota well, that might be the name of it. Where some of the old wells that we had, in the way that they actually brought water up in the different aquifers and stuff, had a different mixture, and they're finding that certain depths and levels are having a lower nitrate level now. And so they're going to take a look at that. We'll also coordinate with the NRD as they test around in our different well areas to look at, having a better profile. But that's one of the reasons we looked, I think they, he selected the area that they're at now, so, but he is, he is taking a look at it.
Any other questions from the council? Does someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve the agreement with Olson?
Do we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item number six, consideration of task board with JEO consulting for professional services for aerial imagery along North Columbia. Greg.
This is a project that is identified within our one and six-year road plan. And Jake has begin, begun the process of doing the engineering on it, and he needs either a topographical survey, so somebody actually has to go out and survey it all across the project, or with an overlay like this, he can do an aerial imagery. And aerial imagery is far cheaper than actually ordering a survey. And so his recommendation was to go ahead and have an aerial image done. JEO can provide that for sixteen hundred dollars for us, and then that will get Jake started in what he needs to do to do the engineering for the asshole overlay of Columbia. I think he is looking from Highway thirty-four up to Hillcrest Avenue, I believe. And so we may use some of that, I don't know that the next project might go all that way, that might be a two-phase project, but he'll do all the design engineering in one shot, just so it's consistent.
Greg.
Yes.
Will that design and engineering take care of some of the drainage problems on that, on that street, especially by?
On North Columbia? Hopefully, I mean, I imagine what they'll do is continue to do the crowning. The problem is some of those corners, those curves on North Columbia are just so flat going off into those streets that they just pool there. I don't know that there'll be a ton of ability for us to alleviate some of those issues. I know we've identified that bottom on Hillcrest as an area that we're going to go in and do some fixes for stormwater. But on some of those curves, it's just too hard because the roads adjacent there too are just so flat as well. Those wells that the water gets caught in on the curves is just hard to retain.
You said this is along North Columbia, right?
Yes.
Which highway then, we go from?
Thirty-four on North Columbia, from thirty-four up to Hillcrest, sorry.
I was a little confused because of, those are those running rough in sound.
It says fifteen on the agenda.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked that question.
Oh, because it's supposed to be from North Columbia. High waters.
So we're on the same page.
Is there anyone else's question?
Oh, under the.
Item six.
Yeah, lower down it says thirty-four.
Well, there's still some drainage problems there.
Old D.
Any other questions or comments or edits? If not, would someone like to make a motion? Move to approve the task board with JEO. Do we have a motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Do we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item number seven, consideration of an agreement with Unsolved LLC, SKA Emergency Communications Network LLC for providing code red emergency notification services. Greg.
Yes, this was the code red system that we've used or utilized since two thousand fourteen. To my knowledge, the only time we've actually activated it was during the water issue in two thousand seventeen? Yep, seventeen August, we did activate it, and then we utilized it to notify the public when the water was safe to drink again. Those are the only two times we actually used the service. We've tried to keep it as an emergency service so that people, when they see it, know you have to pay attention, this is very important. This is not, hey, there's an open house coming up, by the way, blah blah blah, because then people would become desensitized to it. We're trying to work through our emergency manager that we share with York County and Seward County to see if there are any opportunities for the systems available to the counties and the nine-one-one systems to basically duplicate this, how they're utilizing it. But access to those is limited, and so at this time, we wanted to continue to explore that. So we recommended a one-year term rather than a three-year term so that we could see if we can coordinate anything with them. We did utilize, for instance, the National Weather Service, actually was utilized during that water incident as well. And so we're just trying to make sure, what do we have available to us, and what are the options, and how do you implement it? So that if we did have an emergency, we could access it. The last thing we'd want is to get rid of this system, try to go and implement something else that we thought we had access to and then be denied, and not have a surefire way of communicating with the public during an emergency. So recommendation is to do it for one year here.
Any questions or comments from the council on item number seven? Would someone like to make a motion?
So move.
Do we have a motion to approve agreement?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion, is there a second? Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Welcome back, Camper, Fritz, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Item eight, this is a council member requests for a discussion of current impending code violations. Sid.
I put this on here just kind of as a starting point for us as a council to look at how the code violations have been handled in the past, how they're currently handled, and what we possibly could do different. And rather than ask Greg or Ed with a big, long, dear list of things that I want to find out for me, I thought it'd be good if we talked about it in council. If there's other, other concerns or questions that people have, it'd be a good time to, to at least leave this discussion with giving them some direction, if any, on what to do and, excuse me. The, the basis for my concern is a couple of things. Number one, I've been on the council, not the longest, but a while, and we've been getting the property maintenance code violation report for a long time. And there's some of these violations on here that have been on here almost since, since I first got elected, which was, you know, twelve years ago. And there's other ones that have been on here a long time. So the question I'm asking everybody, but in particular the administration is, why are some code violations allowed to be on here for such a long time and not remedied? Is there a methodical process in place for if there are violations, you know, as far as like, you get served a notice here, and then you have thirty days to do this? If not, then this is filed, you know, it goes to court. I don't know exactly what the process is. Because at least from the report, it doesn't, I can't really see a real consistency. And then going, the, the other concern that I just have is our code violation process appears to be complaint-driven. And I know that I've talked to some citizens over the years, and they will come to me with complaints that are like not in my ward, and I'll say, well, call City Hall, oh, no, 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 I don't want to. They don't want to paint a target on themselves or, or attach their name to a complaint. So then we'll say anything. And I know in some of our other discussion about the recent properties over at Columbia and Lincoln, you know, some of the questions are asked, what could we do different so that certain properties can be prevented from forming, falling into such disrepair if the city does in fact have the authority and the ability to write citations and enforce a code? And so as a, as a council, I'm just wanting to know, A, is there anything that we can do different? Is it necessary, is it even practical? B, if so, what changes can we make? Can we empower either city employees or law enforcement to make note of things that they see so that we don't all of a sudden say, oh, my gosh, this person's porch is going to fall off and nobody can live there? When in fact, it doesn't just happen overnight. So that, that's where I'm coming from, and I, and I'd like to hear from other council members, their thoughts, concerns on this topic as well.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I guess I'd like to start with what, what is the process?
Sure.
And where we at, because there was a process in place, there was then a directive from the council to start working on these things. And, and so just so that we're all on the same page on what the process currently is.
Right, so it's kind of like before the process and after the process timeline. So before the process, and as soon as I say process, about six months ago, I think in the summer, the council kind of took a more of a direct approach as far as how they wanted the administration to handle these types of code violations. Before that, we would, we had, we have, have, always had a process. Part of the problem was, is that as you go through that process, ultimately, you're looking at demolition, there's a pretty sizable cost there. You can't do a controlled burn for everything. And so you're looking at tens of thousands of dollars potentially to demo a building. And quite frankly, I think our budget had like fifteen thousand dollars for demo. And so we would get to a certain point, and it decided, we just kept trying to work with the property owner because if we push it any farther, we would be on the hook for paying it, and whether we ever saw, recoup that money was always a question. About six months ago, the council wanted a more aggressive approach. And so, so just kind of tell you, if you want to use an example, with Nuttman Building downtown, we, after that fire, we kept in contact with the owners, trying to get updates on where they're at with their plan. They weren't really moving that quickly, at least not as quickly as people in the community would have liked for them to move. And so it took a while. Eventually, we did some work as far as cleaning up glass, and because there was a safety concern. There was also the structural engineering concern as far as the stability and integrity of the structure being in the Fourth of July. A lot of activities happened right in front of there, it was blocked off for a while. And so eventually, we, I think some council members were pushing to have something done, so we moved to have it demoed and went out for bids. And then she was able to sell the property, and that's where they ended up. I bring that up just because in that case, the criticism was we weren't going fast enough. And then coincidentally, her property on Columbia and Lincoln, we went, after this process was decided, went by the book as far as this is what happens, here's how much time you have to fix it, here's the consequence. And employees were directed to follow that process, as outlined by the council. And then part of the concern, well, the criticism was we were moving too quickly on that. And so part of the issue that I think we have as an administration is kind of this Goldilocks conundrum of, if, you know, everyone has a different opinion of whether we're going too fast or too slow, is it too hot or too cold, too hard or too soft? And so trying to find the right balance is what makes that kind of enforcement tricky. And there are some that have been on there for quite a while. And so once this was decided by the council and to move forward with a more aggressive approach, we've gone back through the ones that were on the list, and we've had meetings with, and have made contact with those property owners, and we've started that process. And we're being more aggressive, like we were instructed to do. So from that standpoint, I think you're going to see a lot more activity happening quicker. But I caution you on that, because you're going to get complaints from people who are going to say, you're going too fast, you're trying to take my property, you're forcing us to do things. This is your process. If you don't like the process, you can change the process anytime you want. When it comes to implementation, that's our responsibility. And so if you don't, you, I would just ask not to try and look at each individual situation and armchair quarterback it. We're going to, not, I'm not going to say we're going to treat every situation exactly the same, because every situation's different. You're dealing with businesses in some cases that could easily pick up and move out of town. Do you want to risk that, the loss of property, tax loss, and self-tax, loss of business, loss of employees? There are risks to pushing in some instances. And so just as we move forward, you know, if someone came to us on day twenty-eight and said, I can't get this taken care of in two days, but if you give me a two-month extension, I can get this done? Do you want us to give them the two-month extension or not? We typically would err on the side of yes, but we want to verify that there is a plan in place, someone's agreed to do it, and there's essentially an agreement moving forward, and then we're going to follow up and make sure it gets done. But again, the public doesn't necessarily see that activity. And so when the public's watching, especially if you're the neighbor who happens to live next door, you see it every day, it's going to look like nothing's happening. Well, there's a lot of things that happen with correspondence, with communication, and other things that just, that isn't visible because the issue itself hasn't been fixed yet to the satisfaction of neighbors. As far as a complaint-driven point that you made, as far as I know, they deliver mail there every day. The complaint didn't come in from the post office until September. They're in the best situation to know the structural integrity of the porch that they walk on every day. So as far as us doing additional inspections, they got to a point where they were concerned for the safety. I will make one point though, and I mentioned this before, we were having the discussion with the Nuttman Properties there. You can still have, I don't want to say this, yeah, you can have a dilapidated building that still meets minimal code requirements. And you have a building that might meet minimal code requirements that you don't necessarily want to live next door to. Those are two completely different standards. And so, you know, we can go into a situation with, and say, okay, they're going to meet the minimal code requirements, and you might not even notice a difference really in the building because the code requirements were inside. And so from that standpoint, just because it meets the requirement, doesn't mean it's going to be a spec home. There's a big difference between those, those, between those two ends of the spectrum. We can, if you want us to be even more aggressive, you know, I don't know what level of police state you want us to create as far as going into people's houses for no, for no reason to inspect the, their, their code compliance. You'll definitely get phone calls about that, if, if that is what we ended up doing. And I'm not, just keeping with rain is down, I'm not proposing we do that. But that is, that is kind of what you're moving down that spectrum of, of, you know, is complaint-driven enough? If it's not enough, well, what do we want to do? I mean, we could go so far, we could have a rental permitting process if you wanted to, and say every year, everyone wants to rent a, rent a property, has to get a permit from the city and requires an inspection. We could do that.
That's not a bad idea.
But people would scream. So it's sort of, what's your comfort level as far as who you can hear from? Because you might find out a lot of properties that suddenly they can't rent. And then what does that do not only to the rental market, but to those properties that the people have, they don't want to put money in to bring them up to code. They can't rent them, so they're not producing any revenue, and then, then, you know, we have to go in and demo or burn, and there's an expense to the, to the city potentially. So that's just, I just real quick, shotgun answer, and I, we can go into more detail if you want, as far as the initial response to, to the agenda item. Did you want to add something?
Like, do we have a code of ethics that we, how do I want to say it, have a standard to? So like, obviously, I'm commercial and residential. So for me, is there something, and I know there's not, but, you know, every three years that my commercial property has to be inspected by the fire marshal and da-da-da-da-da. Every five years, there has to be some type of inspection, da-da-da-da-da, so that we can show that our buildings and our properties are up to code?
Nothing like that that I'm aware of now. Typically, if you're going to sell a property, there would be an inspection done because the potential buyer wants to know what the issues are. And if there are code issues, and, you know, you'll get that booklet that says, you know, these outlets are all wired backwards, or whatever the issue might be, and those can be addressed for the sale. As far as the city or the state's concerned, I'm not aware of any ongoing or, or annual requirement to do that. And so that's why typically it comes down to a complaint system where somebody complains. The other thing to remember is, is that there are always going, there are people in every community who don't have a lot of money when it comes to, to renting. And so they're not necessarily going to complain about the conditions, because for them, it's either that or maybe nothing. And so they're willing to have a situation where maybe they're paying relatively little in rent, maybe they don't even have a lease. Maybe it's just a handshake-type arrangement, and they don't complain because they want to have a roof over their head. And so you don't necessarily get those. In the case, in one of the cases with the property that I mentioned earlier, you know, the gas company is doing a better job of letting us know when they're shutting off gas. So then we can go and, and inspect it at that point, because that's a state law. So when, when all of a sudden there's no gas being provided, then that becomes a state issue.
And electric would be that same.
Exactly, right, right. And so that's why, that's typically how we would approach those situations. But the other thing is, is for, I guess philosophically, I don't like telling people what to do with their property. And this has always been a tough subject for me, being the conservative voice of reason that I am. You have these situations where we have these codes in place, and primarily for, they're for health and safety reasons. So all your building codes for health and safety reasons, not just for you who builds it or lives there, but for future people who buy it so they know that it meets a certain minimum code requirement. You know, when you start going in and telling people what they have to do with their house, I get a little uneasy. Obviously, we want to enforce these codes because there's a safety element there. But when you get to the point, the next level of, well, we're going to demo your house, and now we're going to sell it, and now we're going to force you, you know, to do all these things. It's just, it, it makes me just, like, that to me shouldn't be our first option. We should try and help people to get their properties into compliance and give them an opportunity to fix if they can. And then if they simply don't have the means or the, or the will, then we have to deal with that. But there are, there are a lot of properties, I think, people don't necessarily realize how many houses that are being turned into multi-unit rentals there are in this town. And, and they're kind of tucked away in different neighborhoods and areas. And so, but it's a pretty substantial part of our current rental market. And so, yeah, we could, you know, drive up, you know, we could go that route, it's just, it, it becomes a big undertaking, and would probably require additional resources if we wanted to become that much more aggressive. Yes.
Two things. Are there any best practices, what are other cities doing, what do they have on their books? Have we looked at that at all? Just to make a comparison to see if we can do something differently. Second off, I know my husband has at least two, if not more, reports from Concordia students who have rented around town. Either it's mold or it's exhaust from smoking, smoke coming through some other apartment, some other apartment, and it's resulted in these students actually getting physically sick, and we have it signed off on by physicians that this is what's causing it. We have problems in this town, and people, you know, are in unsafe rental conditions. So again, I ask, you know, I don't, I, I, I agree with you, we don't want to be busting into everybody's property. But on the other hand, one little girl was four years old, and she got so sick, she ended up in the hospital in Omaha. I mean, there's got to be some balance here, we've got to have safe properties.
And that's really just a phone call to City Hall. I mean, I don't, we don't, we don't require a lot of information, we just need to know the story. I mean, it's one of the houses. I mean, it's one of the houses that I had friends living in in college, uh, is, is, was torn down into a lot because it was that bad. It was bad then. Uh, and so a lot of the college housing, and they typically don't complain, um, typically has those, a lot of those issues as well. Dean?
How, how often do we review these complaints? Do we have any standard of how often we review them and, and then possibly come up with an update on what's being done?
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Periodically?
Yeah, so in the packet you have a spreadsheet, more or less, it gives you sort of a, a, up to date of where they're, each one's at. They're all on their own timeline because they all start at different times and they have different issues.
Another question.
Yeah.
Maybe that, since Fred Redmond's house, maybe, maybe we should be talking to, like, Habitat for Humanity or something. Instead of building new houses, have them come and help, help some of these people that can't afford updating their house and go that route and uh.
I will say that I think a lot of the issues that we've run into though are not houses lived in by the owners. A lot of these issues are houses that are being rented, um, and um they're not necessarily being kept up. Well, whether they're kept up to the building code standard or not, we don't necessarily know. But um, they're not necessarily on the trade of homes list.
But you know, like Sid said, some of these have been on there for several years, it might be a way to.
Yeah, and that, and like I said, the last six months, we've been going through those and starting the process. Basically starting the clock on the ones we hadn't talked to in a while. For example, we've met with, with the Hoffer who has that lot by pack and save and he's pulling a demolition permit. And is gonna start, um, probably not right now, but in the next six months, we'll probably be working on, on that area and getting that cleaned up as well and moving forward. And so we, so that's why I said before the council made their, their directive six months ago, is that's the ones we have to go back and restart and move forward with. But from that point forward, we've been following the council's directive on, on the, on how, on being more aggressive essentially on that. Um, but that's, you know, that's to trade up to, you get a lot of stories of, of, well, I can't do it right now, but I can do it in two weeks or three months or next year. And that puts us in a tough spot because how much, how much leniency do you wanna give a situation? And every situation's gonna be different. Sid?
Uh, just a couple of things to what Ellen said. Would it be possible for somebody to find out what other cities like of the first class do as far as best practices? What, how do they do it different, do they have something else in place? Um, you know, that, that could uh answer what her, her question was. Uh, another thing, you, you, she talked about the mold issue, so if, and you said, we'll call City Hall, so. Say that that renter would have called City Hall and said, you know, my daughter ended up hospitalized in Omaha because there's really bad mold in this house. As things are today, if that would have happened, she called City Hall and said that, then what would have happened?
Can you walk over the process?
Ed would have responded to, I'm assuming since they're the renter, they have access to the property. Thus they can sign a waiver form that allows Ed to go in or whoever's doing the inspection at the time. They'll go in, take photos, recognize that there, we'll say mold in this case, then he'll contact. I'm assuming that the mold is not, I'm gonna make some assumptions here, the mold is not the responsibility of the renter. That it is the property and his responsibility to abate that issue. At that point, he's gonna give, some sort of deadline says, you need to come abate this mold. And if you don't, then most likely he's gonna, depending on how bad it is at the time. I've seen mold, black mold from floor to ceiling in buildings before that were people were renting out. And in those cases, we went, oh, you gotta get out now and we condemned it immediately. I mean, if it's a little corner, then yeah, you can have somebody with a cleaning service come in and try to take out the drywall, clean things up. He's gonna make a judgment decision on how long he's gonna give that landlord time to get that cleaned up. If they choose not to clean it up, he's gonna uh condemn the building, he's gonna kick those people out of that unit, which is the worst thing we can imagine because it's not their fault possibly. But now they're dealing with the circumstances of dealing with a child that may be sick with mold, you know, issues. And now they don't have a place to live. I'm in the middle of the process right now because Ed's out, as many of you know. I'm in the process of removing somebody right now for one of the buildings he condemned. And so it's like, do I throw him out on the day it's five degrees out in the middle of the holidays? You know, you're trying to work with them the best you can, but ultimately you're gonna tell them, yeah, you gotta go, it's not a safe situation, so you have to leave.
And we can contact organizations like Red Cross and others.
I worked with Jonathan on this specific one to get landlords and, and different people that had stuff available. It was in the right price range. But in that case, that's what's gonna happen, they're either gonna remediate it, we're gonna throw the people out and then we're not gonna abate it. As we had the discussion last summer, then we would ticket them as well. And then it's also, the last question of that is, as I always say, you can deal with the problem with a scalpel or a sledgehammer. And the final one is, how many times do you ticket them before they get the idea and go, yeah, I better fix it? Because the first time might be a hundred dollar fine, court cost, that's not a big deal. I'm not re-roofing that house for a hundred bucks, I'll pay my hundred bucks. So do you go back, because the rule says in the code, every single day is a new violation. You could tick them every single day that it existed.
I, I'm just curious, since I'm a marketing guy and do a lot of PR stuff, since a lot of it would be experienced by the renter, not all of it, would there be a way, almost like a public service campaign where we could tell people, you know, just like they do with carbon dioxide, you know, you, you having these symptoms, call blah, blah, whatever, you know? Do you notice, you know, bad wiring, are there conditions in your, wherever you're renting that are worrisome or causing problems? Call City Hall, you know? So that people know that there actually is something they could do to start, to start the process. Otherwise, people just may say, well, I don't know. I called my landlord and he said, you know, uh.
I, I, yeah.
You wanna also be careful that you're not getting in the middle of landlord tenant disputes.
Right.
There is a landlord tenant act where civil disputes can be handled privately and not publicly through the city. So you wanna be careful you're not getting into that territory.
It can be a fine line when you're trying to do what you're saying and then not walking in the middle of a, of a war.
And I've got just a little commentary, so I represent four other municipalities. I think I said this six months ago, the city should be commended for having such a short list. Uh, this, this is a city of the first class and I work for four other villages and cities and much smaller municipalities. And their lists are a lot longer, so let's remember that too.
The other one I'd note, just on the rental side, and Kelly probably sees this too, another municipality is, number one time we run into tenants for this is when they're about to be evicted anyway. Then they go and they call City Hall and say, oh, by the way, you should come look at my steps going into the basement and check out my water heater and this electrical issue, see you later. And then they sign off the waiver and let you in right, a week before they're tossed out because they're moving out or being evicted. So that tends to happen more often than not.
So the bottom line is, we're gonna continue moving forward as directed by the council. And if, if you don't wanna, if you wanna tweak that process, you, you obviously can, just let us know what that looks like. Cause we just, we wanna be consistent and we also wanna be fair. And um, and, but yeah, this does get into, it can get pretty emotional. I mean, you're talking about people who are living, I mean, even with that fire downtown, when you had people living upstairs who were all sudden displaced and for no action of their own, uh, and on a pretty cold time of year. And so we do wanna be sensitive to that as well. So there's a lot of, of balancing that goes on in those types of situations. And so we try to, to be as good about that as we can. Anyone else?
I'll just say, the, the key is what you said, they're being consistent and fair, you know? Because granted, it was a part of the whole BLYT study, but that, that's kinda what brought this to the head again is people didn't see that as consistent and fair and what was taking place.
And I think that it was also the timing of, even if there hadn't been a proposal for redevelopment there, um, I believe that complaint from the post office and then from the gas company came in like right after the council uh changed the directive, wasn't that pretty close to that? I mean, it was like the first real big, was it the real first big complaint?
Yeah, and it wasn't just, it was multiple ones, there's another ones.
Yeah.
Off the, after, there's not one by them that we condemned as well.
Yeah, there were other houses in, in, involved as well. It was just that, that happened to be the first one and I think you saw if we're aggressive, what aggressive looks like and not everyone liked that. And so I think that may have caught some people off guard. Because, you know, we have good employees that are very black and white about some things and they're gonna go after it and it says this and it's gonna be this and sometimes that brought people the wrong way. Any other questions or comments? Is that, Sid, does that help?
Yeah, no, that, that helps a lot. I just, the only, or the only thing that we may wanna get back from you, Ellen, is you still want them to, someone to provide what other cities might have in place.
Without, without, you know.
I need a bit of directive on that, cause I can just think back to what we did in Beatrice, for instance.
Okay.
And that's really large. That, just going and saying, what's your best practices, that's a broad statement to them. I don't know if there's some finite thing specifically. I mean, we've had the issue of, do you self-report?
Yeah, cause, no, cause the codes themselves are typically modeled, they're pretty much, I mean, they're like a standard code, an international code.
International property maintenance.
And we typically are gonna update ours based on that every so often. So we don't really, our code isn't necessarily that much different than other municipalities. It's just as far as, you know, the process you want us to follow is when it comes to, um, you know. And one of the things we can do, we can put a form, for example, online or something where people can fill it, fill in online. Uh, the problem is, is that because we need permission to go in, more or less, you can't really be anonymous. I mean, Kelly, if anonymous complaint comes in on a property, does that get a little dicey? Yeah, and you know, and I also don't know if it's just some neighbor who's trying to even or somebody, I mean. So I understand the concern that it's something, like you mentioned Sid too, not everyone wants to give their name, unfortunately. Um, and we can keep, I think, I, I don't know as far as confidentiality goes, but, um, you know, unfortunately, we need to be able to verify that there's some credibility to the claim, that the person actually lives there, that they can, you know, so that we're not just knocking on the wrong, wrong door and getting in trouble that way.
Is there, is, is there a city that we know of, very many from, from your networking, that requires actually rentals to have an inspection once every couple of years or so? Just to walk through, just to check for mold, check for wiring that's perhaps dangerous? I don't think that's so onerous. I, I would think, you know, uh, an apartment should expect to keep those basic things up. And, and I get, we don't wanna go, like I say, busting into people's apartments and houses. But on the other hand, they're collecting rent and they're providing a business. And there is a level of expectancy there that it should be relatively at least modern, safe and, 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 and up to date on the code. I don't know.
And maybe that's something just to kinda give some thought, uh, as, you know, as what, what might make sense. We can sure bring this up again or if you just have an idea, let us know what your idea is. Cause um, that is sort of, you, I guess you're talking about, that you can see the balancing that goes on with trying to figure out what's, what's too aggressive, what's not aggressive enough. And, and when, you know, and I don't know if, you know, the, the other thing too is that I think you'd be surprised if you learn how many rentals there actually are in this town. And then of course, they're gonna all call the week, the last week in December and want their inspection done. Um, so there'll be some logistical issues with that, but I'm not saying it couldn't be done. Um, but it just, there, there would be a lot more in, more involved than I think people might realize. Cause there are a lot of apartments tucked in residential areas right now that people don't even take a second look at because they've been there forever. And a lot of them are two stories, they kinda blend in with the houses around them and you don't even realize they're there half the time.
I don't know that I'm asking for anything, I just, it's something we could, we should not, you know, stop talking about this. And as, if we get more complaints and more issues, maybe we have to revisit something a little more structured as far as action goes, but.
And you'll see the updated lists as we move forwards, you'll know what we're working on.
Perhaps some outreach to Concordia, um, if students had an outlet, a way to go even just through Concordia to, they don't like having, so I have to go to the city, I don't know what to do, they get all worked up about it. So maybe if they could go through student life or something like that and then student life could facilitate if, if a problem was really serious enough or something, just something like that.
And we can talk about having some kind of a form created that we could just give to Concordia. And that way, when the issues do come up, they can have an online or an actual hard copy that they can give to the students if they have issues.
That's a good idea. I mean, a lot of it is student housing and, and they, you know, every, every, they come and go, but.
Sure.
It should be relatively safe, kids shouldn't be going to the ER and to the specialist because they can't breathe.
No, absolutely.
I do have one comment, talking about all these apartment houses and Seward now are approaching fifty years old or more and, and that, that's maybe something we need to think about in the future.
He's saying that's old.
Yeah, well, it's old enough. But the thing I'm looking at is, you know, here all these big cities got apartment house fires and stuff and I think we've been pretty lucky over the years that we haven't had one.
Sure.
Kind of back to my code of ethics, since, you know, maybe if you did it to where, and I know this would take a lot of work, but, you know, building permits, everybody's gotta pull for electrical or pull for those kinda things. Like if there was a database out there that said, you know, no one's pulled an electrical permit for this residency in twenty-five or fifty years, maybe that's a good thing to say, hey, as a code of ethics for Seward, we do an electrical update every so often, just wanna make sure and kinda do it that way. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer either, cause it's really, you know, becomes a question of, you know, how proactive do you want to say to be and what's a reasonable amount of proactiveness versus um, the other end of the spectrum, which is the complaint driven, which has its challenges as well. Cause then a lot of times we don't hear about things and if we do, it, it may be farther um dilapidated than it would have been had we gotten, uh, been aware of it sooner.
I think Ellen's idea with it, maybe a check off sheet for.
For Concordia's.
Concordia would be a good idea.
And do like a grading system almost, like grade one, not a big deal, you haven't mowed your yard in two weeks. We're not gonna like come at you with sledgehammers and scalpels. But you know, if it got to something to where an electrical issue that caused a fire, we're talking grade five, there needs to be some serious action.
Well, yeah, and those typ- And those typically get treated, I mean, a little bit differently just because we can mow it and send them a bill.
Right.
We start getting into the code compliance stuff, that's a whole nother animal entirely. But yeah, that's a good point.
And, and we can send the bills, but that doesn't mean you pay them.
There's that too.
Exactly, exactly.
So, so, yeah, so the next budget, if you see a line item for a hundred thousand dollars a demo, you'll know why it's in there. Any other? Don't do that.
We have lots and lots.
We're just spitballing, there's no bad news right now, right? Um, unless there's any other question or comments, are you good with that?
Thank you.
Okay. That's item number eight, there's no action required there. And item number nine, discussion on revising LBE forty, application review board structure, changing the authority from final approval to recommendation, this is also Sid's, which one do you think?
Yeah, this is um, something that is not driven by any, any events or any recent action by the board. It's, it's something that, that I've actually thought about, my, just as a, as a council person for a long time, actually. And I'm wanting just other ideas or other, other input from, from other members in the governing body. I, I'm, I, if I remember right, I don't know how to state it. I remember, I don't remember who it was, Josh, you may remember, at one time within the past six, seven years, we had someone come in either from the league or, or somewhere from the state or something and kind of explain to us, kinda give us a little uh work session on how LBE forty is supposed to work, how it's intended. Am I remembering that correctly?
The league has like a PowerPoint.
Lynn Rex came out and presented.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, okay. Um, so just a couple of things that I've got ideas bouncing around is, A, I thought it would be good, especially since we, since we have some new council members here that haven't been here that long. I think we'd good, we, would be good to do something like that again, have somebody like Lynn come out, not only give a presentation on, on LBE forty, but some other things. But uh regarding LBE forty, and correct me if I'm wrong, that I'm aware of, there's no other committee that exists that has the authority to disperse tax related funds, am I right?
Well, the only two that we have, like we have LBE forty and we have TIP, which is the CRA board that's, that is directly involved with economic development and the, the CRA board makes a recommendation to the council. I don't know that there's any other boards other than your normal budgeting process as far as expenditures would go. But as far as like economic development dollars, that's, those would be the only two that state, um, allows us to do as a city.
Right. So I am correct in my, in my memory?
Yeah, just those two, yeah.
CRA is a recommendation.
Yeah.
Cause that has to come to us.
Right.
Right, so.
And that's when, like when Willis would, Andrew Willis would come and present the TIP.
Right, right, right. Um, so, and this is just a personal, uh, belief or principle of mine is, um, I, I have for years been just a little uneasy with, and I know that, I know that it's written, the, the reason we're talking right now is I know that it's a big deal to make changes, because each city has the, the ability to write the way they want to administer the LBE forty, correct, Greg?
It's a plan.
The plan, yeah, and it requires.
Voted on by the people.
Voted on by the people.
Right, you have an economic development plan that was approved by the voters.
And that's, and this is all part of that, and so.
And then you have some statutes behind it that are, that, there's not a lot of detail to those statutes.
Exactly, it's quite broad.
Whereas with the TIP financing statutes, there's a lot more details that spells out how you are to disperse these funds.
Right.
LBE forty is very broad.
Right. And so, um, knowing that it, that it is something, the plan has to be approved by the voters, I realize it's nothing that we can just say, well, let's change it tonight. Okay, now it's changed. It, it's a big deal. And so that's why I wanted to start the discussion out, if we end up doing anything at all. So there's plenty of time, if it, and it may not happen until twenty twenty. But the thing I personally have never been that comfortable with is that we have a, a, a committee, not, not the governing body, having the final approval on dispersment of, of these kinds of funds. Because they are tax-related, sales tax, albeit, um, different from say like a foundation, where that money comes from donations, it comes from endowments, you know, it comes from the private sector, and then they have their own board who elects to decide how that money gets dispersed. In this case, it is public funds because it is tax-related. And I realize that we have a couple of council members on that committee. Uh, but, so that is what's driving my desire to change the authority level of that committee to recommendation and not final approval. And the other underlying reason behind that is I believe it would provide a greater layer of accountability and transparency for the whole board, in that it is, it is the governing body making the final decision and not, uh, people appointed, uh, to a committee. Not assuming that there would be anything unethical taking place, but I just think it's, it provides a good layer of security to know that the governing body is the ones finally making the decision on that. Those are my thoughts. I don't know what anybody else thinks, this is just for discussion.
Do you have any questions or comments, Ellen?
Could I ask John and Jake to address this?